Let's start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The Rush County vicious statement is achieve personal excellence through a wide range of educational challenges and opportunities. Mr. Superintendent, do we have any public comments tonight?
Mr. President, there was not a request for public comments this month.
Well, let's go forward to tell me something good. Ms. Mastin, where are you? Oh, right there.
All right. It's my great pleasure to introduce Mr. Caden Wilson as our student of the month. Caden is the fifth grader in Ms. McKinley's class. He's terrified to be up here, and I begged him and pleaded him, and he did. And I can't think of somebody more deserving of this. Caden came to Arlington back in third grade, and it's absolutely incredible how much he's grown. He's fortunate enough to have several people in our building that work with him every day. And everybody that I talked to just gushed about him, how much he's grown, his effort, and his overall positive mindset. His teacher, Ms. McKinley, said he's an absolute positive force in their classroom in that he just always adds positivity and smiles there by his room. She said he's really cranked up his effort in math, and it's really showing in his work. Ms. Grimmy made the point to mention that Caden has incredible effort, perseverance, and a positive attitude. Everyone I asked about Caden is just overwhelmingly proud of him. The growth he's had in two years is unreal. He's worked so hard, and he deserves every bit of everything he's got. Caden, we're all very proud of you and very fortunate to have you at Arlington. Congratulations. All right. The next, our staff member of the month, Ms. Courtney LeFavers. Very honored to recognize her. I had the pleasure of teaching with Courtney her first year, and it was very obvious then that she was very talented, and it's exciting to see how far she's come. Here's just a few of the things her peers had to say. Courtney is an exceptional teacher who excels at setting clear expectations for her students, encouraging them to reach their full potential, and making learning engaging. Her classroom is always filled with excitement, creativity, and she creates a fun and welcome environment for everybody. By pushing our students to achieve and fostering a love for learning, Courtney is truly making a difference in the lives of her students. Another person said Courtney is an absolutely amazing kindergarten teacher. She's very structured, which is needed for many of our kids who've never had experience at school. She goes out of her way to keep learning fun and does lots of hands-on projects in her classroom. Then somebody else says she provides a strong academic foundation that we need as students in our school. She's an integral part of our primary education team. Ms. Mast and I always gush about our K-three team, and she's the basis of it. She starts everything. We're lucky to have her. So, congratulations, Courtney.
I'd like to thank Mr. Benson for filling in for Mrs. Mast. Her son had surgery today, so she's at home being mom. It's nice to have a great backup.
Mrs. Wilson?
We took a little different turn here, so I think three out of the four of us are thrilled. As the final four approaches, I thought that a quote from a basketball legend would be appropriate to start this off. John Wooden said, "The most powerful leadership tool you have is your own personal example." And those of us that are part of the staff at Milroy have a leader that most certainly leads by example in Mrs. Lisa Wilson. I am lucky that I get to work with Mrs. Wilson each day and learn from her, although I will admit that I do not think she's very happy with me at the moment, so I may not be allowed to continue working with her, so...
I'll evaluate you next month.
Keep that in mind if you're hurting her, Adean. I'm just kidding. Hopefully. Each month, Mrs. Wilson goes through nominations for staff and student of the month, and we often discuss the commitment and the dedication that the staff members show, as well as their positive and contagious attitudes. Each month, as we talked about these things, I just kept thinking, Mrs. Wilson is the one that sets this example for all of us. So, a couple of months ago, I had this great idea that I was going to surprise her with a nomination, and I wanted to have approval, or at least someone else that I could blame to. So, I reached out to Mr. Jameson to make sure it was okay, so that Mrs. Wilson couldn't make me leave, and he approved. So, I continued with my grand plan, and I have to tell you that I am not someone that is smooth at not telling the whole truth. So, I had a lot of really high-pitched conversations with her that she never caught on to yet.
She lied to me.
So, I secretly met with students and staff and had them share just exactly how much Mrs. Wilson means to them. So, the Friday before spring break, our school had gathered for a convocation, and Mrs. Wilson had plans to announce our staff and student member of the month at this convocation. Let her go on with her plan. And I made up a story about a quick video that I needed to show students about the anti-bullying. But the truth was, I was planning on playing a video that showed her exactly what the kids had to say about her value to Milroy. And needless to say, she was shocked and surprised when I began talking about her and shared my secret plan. I was really shaky at the time. When the moment hit, I got very nervous. But true to reform of being a servant leader for us, she did not want this recognition, and she's much too humble to just enjoy the attention, but we went ahead and did it anyway. So, she would much rather be up here sharing about one of her valued staff members, but we as staff wanted to share our appreciation for all that she does for us. So, Mrs. Moore's going to share in just a couple of moments what staff members had to say, but this is a little video we put together about what our students had to say about her.
Mrs. Wilson is a man of the students.
Mrs. Wilson wants me to be my best.
Leader.
Mrs. Wilson is the leader.
Mrs. Wilson is my best wife.
Mrs. Wilson sets a good example for us all.
I love Mrs. Wilson. She is a good teacher.
Mrs. Wilson is the driver of our energy pot.
Mrs. Wilson is the best.
Mrs. Wilson works hard.
Mrs. Wilson makes me want to succeed.
Mrs. Wilson is a good teammate.
Mrs. Wilson is...
Karen.
Honest, you're on the list.
Up now.
Important.
Phenomenal.
Positive.
Time.
Beautiful.
Compassionate.
Beautiful.
Outstanding.
Dedicated to the young and middle.
Trustworthy.
Mrs. Wilson supports all of us.
What students had to say, and Mrs. Moore's going to finish up with what some staff members had to say.
Okay, so Mrs. Wagner, our secretary, said she is kind and compassionate. She is very considerate and always doing for others. She brings joy to the students and staff and is always looking and thinking of new things and ideas to make Milroy the best it can be. She has a heart of gold. She is the best boss, and I enjoy working with her. She is just fun.
Mrs. Byrne, our sixth grade teacher, said, "As a former classroom teacher, Mrs. Wilson has never lost sight of what the day-to-day workload of a teacher is. She makes every effort to respect our need for time and self-care. She touches base with her staff almost daily and routinely asks what she can do to help. There is always a kind word, a flood of encouragement, and a heartfelt smile. There is truly no one I would rather work for. She is awesome." And then I said, "Where do I even begin? She is hands down one of the best admin I've ever worked for in the past 25 years, and I've worked with a lot. She ranks right up there with Mr. Phil Mitchell, and he was and is a legend. I first worked with Lisa years ago when she taught second grade. Her enthusiasm for her students and teaching in general was contagious. I was so excited for her when she moved up the ladder into more of an administrative role. When I learned she had become Milroy's new principal, I was just ecstatic. She is most definitely a team player and genuinely respects her staff. I couldn't be prouder to work for and with her each day."
And then just to finish up, as a final word, I want to personally thank Mrs. Wilson. She's been a mentor to me, and I'm really grateful for not only your leadership examples, but for your compassion and care.
Okay. I really do appreciate my staff and students, but I do want to say I evaluate you next month. And you know what they say about payback. So, anyway, so now the important thing. This is Aubrina Wiki, and I've known her since she was in second grade. She was a second grader. She actually was a leader then, and she was here, actually right here, wasn't it? In second grade, we presented, some of you might have remembered, the Flat Stanley Project. She was one of the leaders, and we presented that to the school board. But Aubrina, she has, she has volunteered for a new program that we started at school this year, the Cardinal News Crew. The small group of students, they volunteered how to use the technology and deliver our daily announcements. She shows a lot of responsibility and dedication to Milroy. One of her teachers, Ms. Banks, says Aubrina is always respectful, responsible. She's always engaged in her learning and helps others. Aubrina is involved in many of the extracurricular activities at school. She's a pleasure to have in class, and as a student, I can always count on her. Aubrina's sixth grade teacher, Mrs. Byrne, says Aubrina is the true embodiment of a good friend and a natural leader. She's the first to step up and volunteer when a project is being launched or undertaken. She has a true talent for making everyone feel included and important. No one is a stranger to Aubrina. Just a minute ago, I said, "No, Aubrina, you'll be able to give your speech," and a minute, and she just looked at me, and I thought, "You know what? She could pull that off." She, Aubrina is a critical thinker, and she's an eloquent advocate for causes that are important to her. And most importantly, Aubrina has a lot of friends, and one friend said Aubrina is sweet. She's funny. She really makes people feel better when they're sad. Aubrina is amazing at drawing. She's always there when you need someone to talk to. She's a great personality and a good listener. Aubrina is powerful. That's the most important thing. So, congratulations.
Mrs. Edwards?
I would like to, with great pleasure, recognize Huntley Crouch. And she was nominated by multiple people, but one of our aides, Mrs. Brunz, nominated her. And I want to read what she had put in the nomination. Huntley is the second reader, and Mrs. Pageant has also nominated her as well, and she's been nominated multiple times. Huntley was nominated as a student of the month because of her genuine kindness towards all of her classmates, especially three kiddos from Life Skills. One day, from day one, she has been their friend, their helper, their little mother, and their biggest cheerleader. When students are taken to specials, she's always waiting for them and helps the aide and the students out tremendously. Mrs. Brunz recalled a favorite memory from music when they were folk dancing. Do you remember folk dancing? Well, Mrs. Brunz said that you ask a special needs student to dance with you, and you held his hand while she held him up to dance, and you were having a blast, and then you ask another girl to dance with him, and you went over to dance with another young man. And after that was all over, you explained to Mrs. Brunz that that young man was upset and crying because he didn't have anybody to dance with. And this is what Huntley does, and she doesn't do it for recognition, because she has a great heart. So, congratulations. And our next staff member of the month is a familiar face to somebody up here. We've got a beaming mama. And there again, Ms. Maddie has been nominated by multiple staff members at RES, and I'm not sure I could cover all of the wonderful things that she's done and brought to us just in the short amount of time that she's been with us. But one of the things, or one of the many things, she's recognized for her positive attitude. She must get that from her dad. And being a team player, she goes above and beyond and is a great asset to the team. And we all have enjoyed, and she has brought a spark of positivity and creativity to RES. She's come in and filled the shoes in our Life Skills program, and it's just been a seamless transition. She shows each and every day, the kiddos, how much she loves them and that they need, and they deserve that love. And she meets each one of them at their level and what they need to learn. She's always smiling. She's always very positive and has been a positive asset to our school culture. And she's there for the staff volunteering as well as the students. No, but Jennifer's got some things to say as well.
So, another comment was Maddie does so many fun and meaningful activities with her class, and I can vouch for that as well. You can tell when you see them, meaning her students, that they love her and she loves them just as much. Maddie works hard to make sure each and every one of her students feels loved and is provided with what they need to be successful. So, congratulations.
Mr. Powers?
Mr. Peters, you've been exceptionally dapper this evening. Appreciate that. Yep. Also, I just want to let you know for the middle school, we appreciate you tremendously. It was eighty-two degrees in here yesterday, and you got to cool down yesterday. So, we appreciate you working really hard to get the air working today. You know what? I'd go give a shout-out to Dan Wright. He had the technical knowledge because the air conditioner's outside that wall weren't turning on, so he got to go. We just appreciate it. Not to remind them they weren't in high school or somewhere. Yeah, there was a lot of... It's not your turn. Please wait, please. Wait your turn in line. I know. We didn't have the jobs last month, so I thought we'd bring a couple of them back for you. So, just wait. You'll have your chance. Oh, yeah. Emily, how are you? Good. Emily Rouse, eighth grader. She has been chosen as our student of the month at BRMS. Mr. Tierney says she's done a great job this semester being a positive influence on her peers. Not only just this semester, but in the year that Mr. Meehan and I have been on. She has a smile on her face. She's always dependable. She's always reliable. She's just a great kid in general, and she can kick my butt in basketball games. I owe you about two or three basketball games, more. I know you need to, but just, you know what? Also, I apologize for not having a certificate. I've had to work really hard the last two days. I've been having to help high school out the last couple of days, so I haven't had that time. So, I apologize for that, but I'll make sure I get your certificate tomorrow, okay? Congratulations. That was a nice joke. And I have the privilege to welcome Becky Wicker and Amy Hedrick as our staff of the month. Just some thoughts here on Becky. A staff member who's on maternity leave right now was having some worries, went to Becky. Becky was able to help her later that night. She delivered her sweet baby boy, so that was a huge thanks there. Another staff member said, "I would like to nominate Becky Wicker. She's incredibly dedicated and compassionate. She always goes the extra mile for the well-being, not just our students, but also the adults too. Thank you, Becky. We know that we can always count on you." And another staff said, "Becky goes above and beyond for her fellow staff and students. She continues to show patience with the frequent flyers. I love how she is willing to help all in need, and we greatly appreciate it." Now with Ms. Amy Hedrick, Amy, one staff said, "Always available to help out where needed. Listens to students' needs and concerns. Listens to all the teachers that help in class, got class schedule, field trips, testing. She is always here and tries to come with a smile, even if things get a little bit crazy." Another staff said, "Amy has done a great job this year filling in areas where needed. Many times, Amy is dealing with so many behind-the-scenes tasks that others don't realize what it takes. She has put in a lot of efforts for scheduling, field trips, dress code policy, and a listening ear. Thank you, Amy, for all that you do at BRMS. You are amazing." And another staff member said, "Amy does many things behind the scenes between scheduling classes, organizing field trips, handling dress code, and the things I don't know. She has rocked it out with hard work and her determination." And Mr. Powers and I could not say enough good things about these two ladies. We have five ladies up front. We certainly know who runs the show in our building. The five ladies up there, including these two, but we couldn't say enough. And Amy, I wanted to say, because I asked you to help in different things, and she's been outstanding. Goes above and beyond, especially just with the scheduling for next year and just the things that we're trying to do. Great job for both of you. So, thank you so much. Say, it's your turn now. You're free. Are you done? Let's make sure you're done. Before I get started, I do want to do just a couple little things here. One, this is National Assistant Principals Week. I know you don't care very much, Jeremy, but I wanted to make mention of this. April first through the fifth. April first through the fifth is the national week. April first through the fifth is the national week. Just wanted to talk about how much I appreciate my team, as opposed to some others. You got some self-absorbed people that don't understand it. No, I want to get moving on. We actually only have one staff member of the month this week, this month. It's great, right? We've got, we're celebrating Mr. Keith Perrin. Keith's in his second year of teaching. Or seventy-second, something like that. And Keith is an absolute icon at RCHS. He is a staple at RCHS. He is, I think, seventy percent of our staff had him as a teacher. If they didn't, they know him from town. He's very involved in the community. He graduated from RCHS. He met his wife at RCHS, and he's a fellow alumni of the Harvard of the Midwest. Go Hounds? That's the only reason I nominated. Go Hounds. That's the only reason I still talk to Grant. So, anyway, I don't think you can really say enough about Mr. Perrin and the years that he has put in. And to this day, you can walk into his classroom, and he is still absolutely thrilled and excited when he's teaching. And in his room, it's not just teaching. Kids are learning, and kids want to learn. Kids do, they really work hard and do a great job for him, but he brings that out of people, and he brings that out of kids. So, I do want to read a couple things that some of his fellow colleagues have said. This is from Mrs. Amy Fox. Had some nice words to say. Said, "Although I was two when you started teaching..." No, she didn't really say that. No. I believe it, though. She said, "Students always have high praise for Mr. Perrin. My two sons could not wait until they could have Mr. Perrin as a teacher their senior year. And if you ask them today who was one of their favorite teachers in high school, Mr. Perrin definitely gets listed right away. He compels students to think outside of the box and challenges them to not just take things at face value. His love of analysis, knowledge, reading, and music transformed his classroom into a unique setting where students can grow as individuals unlike any other class. I saw a lot of growth in my own children's writing and reasoning abilities and taste of music while taking his classes their senior year. Keith has been a neighbor for sixteen years and a coworker for one school year. He is truly one of the most positive people I know. I have met a lot of people from different schools and towns that know him. In all of the time, I have never met anyone that didn't have great things to say about the one and only Keith Perrin." Another one comes from a former student who actually teaches right next door to him now, who speaks, you can't hardly speak to Jennifer Teague without her mentioning something about Keith Perrin and how Keith molded her, and she worked so hard because she wants to impress this man with her abilities. And the day I went to her and told her that Mr. Perrin was very impressed with her, I think she about fell down. So, this is one of her all-time idols. And Jennifer Teague said, "Mr. Perrin, I can't say enough about how much you have influenced not only my career, but my life as a whole. As a student of yours, I learned I could push myself further than I thought possible. Your lessons transcended the content and standards, and I am forever grateful. It's absolutely surreal to be working next door to you, and I hope I can be even a fraction of the teacher you are. I look forward to many more intellectually stimulating or silly and ridiculous hallway conversations. Thank you for all you do, Mr. Perrin, Jennifer Teague." And then, lastly, I want to just read a real short one here from Joni Fenimore. And Joni said, "Mr. Perrin, you're awesome!" As you know, Joni talks a lot. I just had to kind of throw that out there. You can hear Joni teaching in the office down in her room. So, I'll see. Somebody tell Joni to go close her door. Her door is closed. Okay? Um, so, anyway. "Mr. Perrin, you're awesome. Thank you not only for your influence on your peers, community, and your students, but a special appreciation for your personal impact on my whole family." Joni Fenimore. And there's many more like this. Uh, I think you can go on and on. And it says on here, as you notice, somebody wrote back in there and they called Keith Perrin "the captain" and he is definitely the captain of our school. And he is, he will forever be an icon at RCHS. Mr. Perrin, congratulations.
I have the honor of introducing our student of the month this month, Senior Brittany Mayhem. And she is absolutely one of our rock star seniors this year and our leaders in the class. And I'm gonna read a quick comment by one of her teachers and then I'm gonna invite the teacher who nominated her, Mr. Blair Orm, to come up and read his nomination letter. So, first one. "Brittany always goes above and beyond on anything she does. She's a hard worker, she's determined to reach her goals, and she is kind-hearted. She's a well-rounded student who will go far as she prepares to graduate in the coming months." And I think we can all echo that sentiment. So, Mr. Blair Orm, would you like to come up?
Sure. We made your certificate.
I'd first like to mention that I had the opportunity to have her mother and father in class. Apples don't fall far from the tree and luckily she's more like her mother. It wouldn't be, uh, appropriate if we didn't mention the word leadership and we're talking about, uh, student of the month. And it's been debated for years whether we were born with such abilities or whether they are taught. Regardless of how they are acquired, she has attained them. In addition, we consider attitude as a leadership characteristic. She's either been taught or more likely caught, but for certainly procured a positive attitude because attitude is equally as important as ability when it comes to success and she certainly understands that. Her involvement includes a representative in her class, varsity volleyball, FFA, cadet teaching, and I'm sure some other things that we just don't know about. But cadet teaching is where I've really seen her excel, using her skill to teach eighth graders about agriculture and FFA. And what's really unique about this is her passion for it. And passion brings energy, not only her energy that she brings to the classroom, but then the energy that the kids have. And it's, it's kind of not a good day when the kids want to know where she is and why I'm teaching. That also just tells you the type of abilities that she has and she has garnered, uh, with the kids. She's bonded with them. Uh, and I saw one of the comments mentioned that an eighth grader had made a decision to stay in the agriculture program because of her, not because of me. So, I'd take a hundred Britneys in the ag department, but of course, there's just one. God never uses a cookie cutter and her unique skills and qualities make her a keeper in the class of 2024.
Orm, ever count. I'm sorry.
I've got one. Can you tell me something? I've got one. Phil, can you join me up front? You know, if you're ready to say anything. Yeah. Yeah. So, last month, we started the tradition of discussing an operations person, whatever operations means, um, but someone that supports the school in a non-teaching role, um, whether it be a bus driver, custodian, or maintenance person. And, and tonight, I'd like to recognize Tom Owens, who has shared that he is gonna retire after forty-two?
Forty-two years.
Forty-two years as a school employee and I don't believe he's worked anywhere else.
No.
Other than Rush County Schools. Um, so, he has decided to accept another position in the community, um, and he is, uh, we're acknowledging him tonight and I'm gonna allow Phil to share a few words about Tom and then I'll, I'll close that out.
Tom, I'm sorry he was not able to be here. Um, a family member of his is in not very good health and he's needing to be at home. So, um, but I'd like to recognize Tom in forty-two years. I think he started when he was either seventeen or eighteen, uh, just as soon as he could and he has worked at RES the entire time.
Wow.
And, um, he has been very faithful to his duties there. Uh, sometimes he can really push me. But, Tom, he, he knows his job and he's done it very well for many years and I think he does it to just aggravate me on purpose, so. But that's good because I just get right back to him and we get along fine. But, um, I'd like for everyone to keep Tom and his family in, in your prayers and thoughts the next few days, so. But please, uh, join me in a round of applause for Tom Owens and the service team.
I will close just by saying, um, I, I'm new to this district, uh, but I really feel like there's such a family environment here in Rush County Schools. Uh, instances like Tom need to be celebrated. Our society pulls at us and there's all the negative and sensationalism and all the things that go on. And when you have people that show up and do work and don't expect anything in return other than just being a servant, that needs to be celebrated. And the same goes for long-lasting marriages and, and all the other things that give you the feel-good. Tom Owens is a feel-good. Um, and he shows, uh, commitment and dedication to kids and that should always be celebrated. So, congratulations to Tom.
Ms. Angie, have a start with your schoolwork comments.
Congratulations to all students and staff members of the month. Um, of course, I was a little bit partial to one of them. It's always, you know, you, as a parent, you, you want to see your kids succeed and to be able to be right there and watch her succeed. I see her come home and be excited about teaching and about her students and, you know, maybe I'm a little bit partial, but she is what we want for the future of Rush County Schools because she is doing it. Um, but I see a lot of that everywhere. Uh, you know, Keith Perrin, my God, my kids, you were a household, still are a household topic in my house, you know? But, you know, again, here I am crying at a board meeting. So, teachers, enjoy your last couple of months. You're almost there. So, the weather's looking better until it snows again this week. Um, and as an earth-based science teacher, please enjoy the eclipse. Even if it's cloudy, it's gonna be a cool thing to observe. I'm, I'm taking the day off of work because they won't let me do anything with my boys because they're in jail. But, uh, enjoy, do something, go out and enjoy it because it is something that's gonna be amazing that we're not gonna have the opportunity to see quite like this ever again. So, go, go, go enjoy. Look at the stuff with your glasses. With glasses, look at it.
Please.
Yeah, it's amazing to see the dedication and, and the hard work, uh, that goes into the school. Um, all of the people that are being recognized and I, um, looked upon people before them, um, that inspired them also. My son, one of the things that made him most proud, twenty-four years ago when he graduated from high school, was he won the Perrin Reading Award. And I believe that was Keith's mother.
Absolutely.
Uh, who was a legendary teacher at the school. And, um, it's interesting to see generations of families and people that, um, lead each other on. And, uh, congratulations to all of you.
Um, I'm gonna stick with the Perrin theme here, but, um, a couple of years ago, my daughter had him in class and, um, he inspired her and she spoke up to the right or the wrong person, my father-in-law, she was fired up about some of the education bills that were going on and he said, "Well, by God, what are you gonna do about it?" And so, the next morning, um, my father-in-law called her at seven o'clock, but she didn't get up yet until about seven-thirty, even though she had to be at school at eight. Um, "All right, I have appointments. We're going on this date, this date, and we're going up to the State House." And so, she took a friend with her because she didn't want to go by herself and he had them meet with different, the head of the House Education Committee and, and some of the others. And, um, they were, my father-in-law got multiple compliments about how the girls handled themselves, how educated they were, that they could discuss this topic. They were knowledgeable, professional, and on and on and on. And Courtney's friend spent the, um, session working for one of those, um, legislators because he was so impressed with how she handled herself and she's probably more of a Democrat and she actually worked for a Republican, um, through that process. And I, we were in a bed the other day with my father-in-law and he was there and he complimented and he said, and said that she multiple times talked about the teachers that she had at RCHS that encouraged her to speak her mind, do it professionally, and not be afraid to ask questions. So, kudos to you.
Adam? Uh, congratulations to the students and staff. Brittany, how is it you're a senior? Doesn't seem possible. Uh, but congratulations to all of you. Also, we have quite a few people that are in with us tonight that are gonna retire at the end of the year and it's a really talented group. We're gonna miss you. We appreciate all you've done. Uh, the school's gonna miss you, but thank you for what you've done. One last thing. Grant was up talking about the operations group as a family. And I, I want to let everybody know that he, he wasn't just saying that. Um, I had a business meeting here a couple of weeks ago at Mezcal and Grant was there with a big group of the, the guys that he works with to honor one of them that was, I, I think, taking another job, he said. And, uh, you know, I saw some of those guys later and they just really appreciated that somebody was involved with that, take the time to take them out, and they just had a good time. So, I just wanted you to know what Mr. Peters is doing is not just lip service, he's, he's walking it out, so. Uh, congratulations to everyone. Thank you, guys, and gals that are retired. Uh, we're gonna miss you.
Mr. Banks?
Ditto on what everybody else has said. This is a great school corporation and it's not just because of the community, but it's because of the people who work in it and it's because of the students. And all the wonderful things that take place here amazes me every day when I see some of the wonderful things that come out of our students, out of our faculty, uh, and out of everybody that lives in this community. And I'm just proud and glad that my wife married me and made me move into this community.
Mr. Abrams?
Congratulations, everybody. One thing everybody forgets when we're thanking the kids for their great work, the parents. It's, they, they're the way they are because of the parents and it's neat to see, I don't know how many nieces, nephews, some of them, pretty close to my heart. So, it's neat to see all of them. Uh, also, in the past month, I've had a chance, been privileged to go to WTC for their National Technical Honor Society. It's amazing how many kids from Rush County was recognized to this. Uh, wish more people could go, would have went, but they weren't. Uh, the things they have over there, those kids are ready to go out in the workforce and make money. It's, I can't, it's good. Then the other thing I went to witness was the I-Star thing. We had three students nominate three teachers and I think there's some other teachers that's been past I-Star teachers, am I right? Uh, in the crowd, especially the Mr. Pat Haney, Ms. Toni Schultz, and Mr. T.R. Campbell were all recognized in this. It was really neat things like seven, help me?
Nine schools.
Nine schools.
Yeah.
And Mr. Cook did a wonderful job of putting this whole thing on. Uh, the proudest thing I had was our kids got up and talked about the, uh, their teachers and they looked at everybody and they talked. Most of the time, the kids from the other schools was looking at their phone, at their speech. Our kids weren't. They were talking about them. And that echo, or I don't know what the right word is. It's what we're teaching them in school, to be their own person and how to speak in public, you know, what Claire does and Mr. Perrin and everybody else. So, just proud of everybody. And Mr. Perrin, I'm young enough, I had your mom and she was me proud of. She was a great woman.
We're gonna take a short break, five minutes. Pictures for everybody.